I appear on the matter of Walton Forest, Lord Russell last time. You see any others?
Yes, Mr. Andrew.
Good morning, my lord. I appear with Mr. Calzovara for Walton Forest. Mr. Bates and Mr. Grant appear for the respondents.
Yes.
With your leave, I’ve invited everybody up to...
Yes, that’s fine.
...level, that’s useful. Can I give you a very brief thumbnail sketch? I know your lordships and your lady will agree to it.
Yes, well, let me just tell you before your thumbnail sketch that we have read the skeleton arguments, we’ve read the decisions both in the upper tribunal and the first tier tribunal, and we’ve looked at the bundle of authorities that you kindly provided.
I will omit the thumbnail sketch. Thank you very much. What I’m proposing to do is run through the statute and some of the authorities quite briefly, and then open our grounds, and in the course of doing that criticise the decisions below if I may.
Yes. I should perhaps also say that in your skeleton argument you have referred to the Stepney case and the Sagnata case, which I’ve also looked at.
Oh, thank you.
Although they’re not in the authorities.
They’re not, no. We took the view in the end, for economy’s sake, that there’s sufficient reference in alley for our purposes, but I’m grateful for that indication. Can I start with the 2004 Act then?
Yes.
We find in the bundle of authorities at tab three. Again, I’m cautious that the court’s looked at all this stuff. I’ll take it reasonably briefly if I may, but concentrate on parts. Picking this up then in the bundle at page six.
Yeah.
Section seventy-nine kicks off part three. This part provides for houses to be licensed by local housing authorities within housing to which this part applies and are required to be licensed under this part. And this part applies if it’s an area that is for the time being designated under section eighty as subject to selective licensing. And then if we look at page eight, section eighty, we see that the overarching setup of this is that the local authority may designate either the area or an area in their district as subject to selective licensing if the requirements of subsections two and nine are met. Subsection two is the authority must consider that the first or second set of conditions mentioned below, or any conditions specified in an order as an additional set of conditions are satisfied in relation to their area. And then briefly, subsection three, the first set of general conditions are that the area is or is likely to become an area of low housing demand, and that making a designation will, when combined with other measures taken in the area, contribute to the improvement. So that the scheme starts by vesting a huge set of judgements in the local authority about whether to designate all or part of its borough as subject to the requirement for licensing, depending on a whole lot of discretionary decisions made by the local authority. Those are not subject to any appeal process. They are subject to confirmation.
Presumably subject to judicial review.
Quite so, but not statutory appeal systems. And then if we go over to section eighty-five, page ten. Section eighty-five-one requires licensing under, for every part-three house. And then subsection four is a mandatory provision for the local authority. It must take all reasonable steps to secure that applications for licenses are made to them in respect of houses in their area which are required to be licensed. So I can see the start of the building blocks. The local authority designates, once it designates, it’s under a duty to get license applications in. And then the next mandatory provision is section eighty-eight. Subsection one, where an application in respect of a house is made under section eighty-seven, the authority must either grant a license or refuse license. And then we get into the discretion, subsection two. If the authority are satisfied as to the matters mentioned in subsection three, they may grant a license either to the applicant or to some other person if both he and the applicant agree. And then three, the matters are, A, that the proposed license holder is a fit and proper person to be the license holder, and then the most appropriate person. And then over the page, subsection four, section eighty-nine applies for the purposes of this section, and we find that page thirteen in our bundles. Eighty-nine-one, in deciding for the purposes of section eighty-eight-three, A, or C, whether a person is a fit and proper person to be the license holder, the local housing authority must have regard amongst other things to any evidence within subsection two or three. Subsection two is, in essence, unlawful or illegal activity. And then three, evidences within this subsection if, A, it shows that any person associated or formally associated with P, the applicant, whether on a personal, work or other basis, has done any of the things set out in subsection two, A to C, and it appears to the authority that the evidence is relevant to the question whether P is a fit and proper person to be the license holder, or as the case may be, the manager of the house. So the construct there is if the applicant, if somebody that the authority regard as relevantly associated with someone who has committed an offence, then they may have regard to that. So again, a whole set of judgements.
Yeah. Associated is not defined, no?
It’s not. Then beyond the wording there, whether on a personal, work or other basis.
Just pausing there, Mr. Andrew, that it has to appear to the authority that the evidence that the associate has been found guilty of an offence is relevant to the question whether P is a fit and proper person.
Yes. So you start with the objective evidence that somebody has committed an offence.
Yes.
The relevance is only explicitly geared to whether that’s relevant to the applicant. And then if we look at the revocation provision, which is now rather historic in this case to show the symmetry between the provisions, at section ninety-three on page fifteen. The ninety-three-one, the local housing authority may revoke a license B in any of the cases mentioned in subsection two, and then in subsection two-B, where the authority no longer considers the license holder as a fit and proper person to be the license holder. And then it, under just before, three, subsection, section eighty-nine-one applies in relation to, so again, same fit and proper test, relevance test. And if we can then go to the appeal provisions. We’ve handed up some extra pages, I’m afraid, of schedule five. Can I invite you directly after page eighteen in tab?
After page eighteen?
Please, yes, let’s have three.
Yes.
And the reason we’ve weighed down to get more material is to demonstrate that Parliament’s set up a system which has to be applied before a decision is made which could rise to an appeal. So picking it up at paragraph one of schedule five, before granting a license, the local housing authority must, A, serve a notice under this paragraph, together with a copy of the proposed license on the applicant, the license and each relevant person, and consider any representations made in accordance with the notice and law to draw. And then over at paragraph two, the notice under paragraph one must state that the authority proposing to grant the license, and set out the reasons for granting the license, the main terms of the license, and the end of the consultation period. And then paragraph three, this paragraph applies if, having considered representations in accordance with the notice under paragraph one or this paragraph, the local housing authority proposed to grant a license with modifications. Before granting the license, the authority must serve a notice, et cetera. And without dragging the court through it, this is replicated for refusing a license and removing a license. So these are minded to process.
Yes.
In each case, with provisions for representation, provisions for the representations to be had regard to, and then for the decision to be made. But all of that happens before a decision is made which gives rise to an appeal.
Right. So this is at the, for refusal under paragraph six, you can get what you call a minded-to letter.
Yes.
And the consultation period is for what?
For the representations. It’s called a consultation period, it’s not really, of course. It’s a period for setting a deadline for representation.
Right, I’m sorry about what you’re saying.
Gets worse.
Right. So will the notice actually set out the period for the representations?
I don’t believe it does, and I think there may be some, sorry, paragraph twelve, I hope you told.
Yes.
Yep, there you go, at least fourteen days or seven days, depending on the notice.
Right.
So if I can then jump back to the documents already at page twenty in the bundles.
Yes.
We get to the right of appeal. And paragraph thirty-one of this schedule, the applicant or any relevant person may appeal to the appropriate tribunal against a decision by the local housing authority on an application for a license to refuse to grant or to grant. And then at thirty-two, the license holder or any relevant person may appeal to the appropriate tribunal against the decision by the authority to vary all vote or to refuse to vary all vote. So that comes to gamut, and then we get to paragraph thirty-four, which is key here, of course. This paragraph applies to appeals to the appropriate tribunal on paragraph thirty-one or thirty-two. An appeal is to be by way of rehearing, but, you know how much weight we put on the word start here, may be determined having regard to matters on which the authority is unaware. And again, you know how much weight we put on unaware. The tribunal may confirm, reverse, or vary the decision of the local housing authority. And on an appeal under paragraph thirty-one, the tribunal may direct the authority to grant a license to the applicant, or a license or such terms as the tribunal may correct. You’ll know from Mr. Justice Fancourt’s judgment that we gave him a panoply of analogous sections within the Act of Schedules. We put one in for illustrative purposes here, it’s on the next page, page twenty-three, section two, four, nine, A, appeals. And it’s paragraph ten, a person to whom a final notice is given may appeal to the first-tier tribunal against the decision to impose the penalty or its amount. And here those words again, under paragraph three, an appeal is to be by way of rehearing, but may be determined.
Is there a difference between, as it were, plain vanilla in thirty-four, the appeal is to be by way of rehearing, and the slight change in wording under thirteen, under ten, three, A, is to be a rehearing of the local authority’s decision? Is there any significance in that?
It’s difficult to see what difference that could possibly make on the basis that nobody else’s decision was ever in play here. But yeah.
It’s odd, though, that there is that slight difference in wording.
Undoubtedly true. It’s the difficulty as one climbs up a judicial ladder and focusing the analysis on these, how difficult it is to reconcile.
Yeah.
Or construe perfectly well, you see.
Right, so that’s the statutory framework.
That’s the statutory, then.
And then are there any procedural rules that are relevant?
No.
But it’s common ground, I think, that on an appeal to the first-tier tribunal, the appellant calls the evidence.
In fact, it’s the other way around. The first-tier tribunal, as a matter of practice, tends to ask the authority to open.
Right, well, right. Both sides call their evidence.
Yes, they do.
And their cross-exam, witnesses are cross-examined, the documents are looked at, and all the rest of it.
Yes, although, as we’ll see when we come to it here, not all of the evidence in this case, and it was a remote hearing. So the degree to which it actually replicates the situation before the local authority is a matter of combat in the usual judicial way. But certainly evidence is there. So going to the authorities, can I just make some propositions and then attempt to support? So first, it’s that a rehearing is something that can range from essentially what this court conducts in relation to appeals before it, to something that is called a rehearing in the fullest sense, which is what one used to do to go to a judging chambers for a master. You simply start afresh, calling whatever evidence you like, and completely untravelled, what the master below did.
So are you saying as a matter of language what goes on in this court can be a rehearing?
Yes. The point of my proposition is that the word rehearing is essentially meaningless. And I support that by taking you to a decision here in tab five, Mr. Dupont.
Yeah. I mean, if this court conducts a rehearing, it wouldn’t normally hear the witnesses.
No.
It would be a rehearing on the basis of the materials that were deployed before the trial charge, subjecting that marshal and all that.
That’s my point, that it’s a word which covers such a multitude of situations, that its use in statute is nothing more than a starting. If, in Dupont, if I take you to the judgments of Lord Justice May, starting at paragraph eighty-four, can I invite the lords and my ladies to read paragraphs eighty-four through to, down to ninety-five?
Yes.
Of course, I’m happy to read it out.
No, no, needn’t read is allowed. One of the criteria for being judges is that we are able to read.
That covers rather more ground than is necessary for my proposition.
Two minor points. Interesting that paragraph eighty-seven, Lord Justice May quotes the Order Fifty-Nine Rule Ten, which talks about no further evidence other than evidence as to matters which have occurred after a day of trial or to be admitted.
Well, yeah.
Just as a slight footnote, paragraph eighty-nine, I think actually what your justice was referring to were High Court appeals in the Queen’s Bench, which at any rate when I started, didn’t have a decision for the master. You used to ask him to adjourn the application into court.
Yes. As I say, it covers rather more ground and is necessary for my proposition. But my proposition stands at its simplest. The word rehearing doesn’t tell you anything beyond the fact that it’s an appeal. Can I just highlight one matter before we leave this, which is at the very bottom of page seventy-three, the end of paragraph ninety-three, the citation of what was then Lord Justice Mayence. It cannot be a matter of simple discretion how an appellate court approaches the matter. And I’ll come back to that, because something which we say Mr. Justice Fancourt fell into error on was essentially leaving it open to the first-tier tribunal, what’s course to adopt about the date on which it was making its decisions, or the date on which it was focusing on evidence. And so having, as it were, tried to knock down any meaning in the word rehearing, can I go to Begum for my second proposition, which is that in the case of statutory appeals, the issue is always what did Parliament intend the jurisdiction to be? It’s probably not very controversial nowadays, but it’s interesting how the Supreme Court felt it necessary to go back to first principles on it in a case of a statutory appeal to a specialist tribunal. It’s at tab eleven.
Right, just before you leave, Dupont, I mean, the point that they make, following on from the extract that you asked us to read, is that in what was then CPR fifty-two-eleven-oneB, where there was a reference to a rehearing, it was a rehearing in the fullest sense of the word.
Yes.
And that decision had been given before the Housing Act two thousand and four, hadn’t it?
No, it was two thousand and six, though.
Yes, but the decision was given in two thousand and three.
Ah, I’m sorry, my apologies.
It may have been reported in two thousand and six as a note that the decision was given in two thousand and three.
I must take it that Parliament could only be aware of it when reported. In terms of the principle of whether rehearing is a word with freighted with meaning, that’s obviously old law.
Well, whatever rehearing means, I take the point that there’s a spectrum of meanings. The one thing it does not confine the appellate court to do is seeing whether the decision comes within a reasonable range of decisions. The question is whether the decision was right or wrong.
That’s certainly true in this court, of course. Query whether that’s not the case in statutory appeals from local authorities, and we’ll look at some authority on that. What’s, again, to shortcut it, people used the word deference for a very long time and said that courts or tribunals would give deference to a decision-maker below. What this court said in, sorry, what the House of Lords said in Raymond was that that’s actually better described as a constitutional divide, and that, again, we’ll come to it in a minute, but it’s not as straightforward on statutory appeals as it is to appeals to this court. Can I just go to Begum?
Begum, that’s tab eleven, I think.
Tab eleven, please, picking it up at paragraph forty-six. I should warn that the effect of Begum is something which is being hotly debated in this court on a reasonably regular basis, with at least one very important judgment outstanding on its consequences. But the short point about what was going on here was C I A C, which consists of a High Court judge, an upper tribunal judge, and a security expert, as it’s politely put, who tends to have been a very senior member of MI5 or MI6 or similar, decides issues in open and closed session.
Yeah.
And is, of course, given a lot of credence for its specialist knowledge. And the view was taken before this decision that an appeal to it, which was an appeal simplicity without extra statutory language, was something which allowed it to reach its own conclusions. What the Supreme Court said was, in essence, that’s untrue, that the word appeal actually means something akin to judicial review in that sense, despite the specialist knowledge of that tribunal. It reached that from first principles, which we see, picking it up at paragraph forty-six of page two-three-one. And can I just highlight some of this, before considering authorities directly to C I A C, it’s worth considering some other authorities concerned with the scope of appellate jurisdiction, most of which were cited in the case of Jordani Elisee. It’s apparent from them that the principles to be applied by an appellate body and the powers available to it are by no means uniform. At one extreme, some authorities concerned with licensing appeals to courts of summary jurisdiction have held that such appeals should proceed as rehearings, reflecting the terms of the relevant legislation for the procedures followed by such court. Other authorities concerned with appeals to the Court of Appeal against discretionary decisions by lower courts have held that the scope of the appellate jurisdiction was much more limited. Modern authorities concerned with the scope of the jurisdiction of tribunals hearing appeals against discretionary decisions by administrative decision-makers have adopted their approaches reflecting the nature of the decision appealed against and the relevant statutory divisions. Even there, starting from first principles, the Supreme Court conflates the word rehearing with a specific type of legal. Yes, and then if we go to paragraph sixty-six, you’ll see the sort of factors which the Supreme Court held were relevant in.
Sorry, I’m not, maybe in public, I didn’t quite catch what he said, but in forty-six, isn’t Lord Reed saying that at one extreme, he’s using the expression an appeal should proceed as a rehearing, and that the other extreme, he talks about a more limited appellate jurisdiction? I mean, as I understand it, he’s using the expression rehearing there to mean at one extreme, namely a full, in the previous way in which it was referred to in, what is it called, ten-ten, yeah, ten.
Yeah, not in Dupont. Dupont wasn’t cited. So what the Supreme Court wasn’t invited to was the notion that rehearing itself has a regional meaning. So his lordship there was simply taking rehearing as meaning at one extreme of the spectrum.
As you were going to it as a hearing de novo, fresh hearing, completely fresh hearing.
Yep.
Although if they had have gone to Dupont, they would have understood that when the expression rehearing is used in the CPR post-two thousand and three, it would mean a full rehearing.
Yes, but not necessarily in respect of other statutory divisions.
No.
Okay. No, I accept that, but the point is, Dupont wasn’t referred to, that, if I can say this of Lord Reed, was a loose use of the word rehearing. And then if we jump to paragraph sixty-six, as I say, I’m using a couple of passages here to show what it is the Supreme Court had in mind for factors to be taken into account. In relation to the nature of the decision under appeal, section forty provides the Secretary of State made by order deprive a person of citizenship status if the Secretary of State is satisfied that deprivation is conducive to the public good. The opening words, the Secretary of State may, indicate that decisions under section forty, subsection two, are made by the Secretary of State in the exercise of his discretion. are made by the Secretary of State in the exercise of his discretion. The discretion is one which Parliament has confided to the Secretary of State. In the absence of any provision to the contrary, it must therefore be exercised by the Secretary of State and by no one else. There is no indication in either the nineteen eighty-one act or the ninety-seven act in the present form that Parliament intended the discretion to be exercised by or at the direction of Saayak. Saayak can however review the Secretary of State's exercise of his discretion, set it aside in cases where it can appear as allowed as explained below. And then reiterating that for a different purpose, the statutory condition, paragraphs seven, which must be satisfied before the discretion could be exercised, is that the Secretary of State is satisfied that deprivation is conducive to the public good. The condition is not that Saayak is satisfied that deprivation is conducive to the public good. The existence of a right of appeal against the Secretary of State's decision enables his conclusion he was satisfied to be challenged. It doesn't however convert the statutory requirement that the Secretary of State must be satisfied into a requirement that Saayak must be satisfied. That is a further reason why Saayak cannot exercise the discretion. And then running it together at paragraph sixty-nine, Lord Reed says, for the reasons I've explained, something in it appears to be an apt description of the role of Saayak. It's not to say that Saayak's jurisdiction is supervisory rather than appellate. This jurisdiction is appellate. References to a supervisory jurisdiction in this context are capable of being a source of confusion. Nevertheless, the characterization of a jurisdiction as appellate doesn't determine the principles of law which the appellate body is to apply. And what his lordship was referring to about absence of statutory language comes from Raymond.
Well, the absence of statutory language in that particular case comes from section two.
It does.
Which he quotes at paragraph thirty-two.
Yes.
I mean, as you say, a lot depends on the terms in which the right of appeal is conferred.
Yes.
And here we've got section, session two-one. But I think, does he not say that the the appeal in Begum, is that under section two-one?
Yeah, it was an appeal simplicity.
Right, because was it Ali where he discusses all sorts of different rights of appeal?
Yes.
Was that Raymond?
Ali, Ali too, but Raymond touches on it, as we'll see. The trouble, one of the huge difficulties that Begum has caused is that section two is embedded in a series of sections which give explicitly a right of appeal under this section, but a right, under the other sections, a right of review which explicitly has to be determined by the principles of judicial review. And what Begum does is align the two, and that's what's caused all the difficulties. But the court knew it was doing that, and it did it by, as I say, starting from first principles.
Although Lord Reed does accept, does he not, in paragraph sixty-eight, that if the question is whether a decision is compatible with the Human Rights Act, the tribunal makes up its own mind. It's not simply reviewing the Secretary of State's decision.
That's what was thought until this court then determined a case called P three.
Right.
And made inroads into that. But yes, that's what Lord Reed said. And I should have phrased what I said earlier on differently. The reason why Lord Reed embarked on the exercise he did about statutory language not limiting was Raymond, coupled with the fact that the statutory language in this particular case of Begum was silent.
Yeah.
So can we just look briefly at Raymond? Is it tab four?
Just, sorry, just before we leave Begum, the points made in sixty-six and sixty-seven, you can't make it as strongly in this case, can you, by reference to section eighty-eight? I, I mean, in that case, it was very clear that the requirement was that the Secretary of State is satisfied that the deprivation is conducive to the public good. Section eighty-eight is phrased in a less direct, in a less direct manner.
Less direct, but on different levels. So in our case, the local authority makes one overarching decision to grant or refuse to grant or to revoke a licence. But in doing that, it's given an explicit set of discretions, one of which is to have regard to evidence which it regards as relevant.
They're not really discretion, so are they? They're value judgments.
Yes. I'm always uneasy about the real definition of the word discretion. Value judgments, discretion, judgments.
Yeah, I mean, but the fundamental sort of relevant matter is that the proposed license holder is a fit and proper person, which is put in entirely neutral terms in section eighty-eight, subsection three.
It is.
Section eighty-eight, subsection two, says the authority must be satisfied as to the matters in subsection three. They may, if the authority is satisfied, they may grant a licence. Well, that's because nobody else is going to be granting the licence.
Yeah. Within that range of, that set of levels, there is a level at which the local authority is empowered to make a decision about whether evidence of a connection with somebody who has committed an offence is relevant.
Yeah.
That's the analog with the Begum situation. And I agree, it's not, as it were, a high-level decision, it's the underlying process which is involved. If I can jump to Raymond there in tab four. That, page. Picking it up with Lord Stain to start with, so page fifty-seven. The, again, this was another decision about the Special Immigration Appeals Commission and its remit. This decision was taken at a time when Saayak expressly had power to allow an appeal where the exercise of discretion should have been exercised differently by the Secretary of State. Not the situation obtained by Begum was decided. And it was those express words which the Court of Appeal and subsequently the House of Lords held entitled Saayak actually to substitute its own judgment, if you like. And if we pick it up on page fifty-seven at letter F, in the light of the observations of the ECHR in Rahal, Parliament provided for a high-powered commission consisting of a member who holds, as held, a high judicial office, an immigration judge, and a third member who will apparently be someone experienced in national security matters, and then Chief Judge Lord Wolfe. And then Lord Wolfe, the master of roles, observed that the commission were correct to regard it as their responsibility to determine questions of fact and law. He added, the fact that Parliament has given Saayak responsibility of reviewing the manner in which the Secretary of State has exercised his discretion inevitably leads to this conclusion. Without statutory intervention, this is not a role which a court readily adopts. But Saayak's membership meant that it was more appropriate for Saayak to perform this role. I respectfully agree. So what you get, I've taken these decisions in reverse order, but what you get is the position obtaining in two thousand and three, when Saayak was expressly given the power to exercise its discretion. And the Court of Appeal and subsequently the House of Lords say, for that reason, and also because of the specialist nature of it, it can do that, but absent such words, it would not be able to. And then those words are taken away, the specialism remains, but Begum decides it is now not entitled to exercise that discretion because of the absence of words explicitly giving it that power. So the specialist nature of the tribunal matters now. And.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm not quite there yet. The section which gave the right of appeal is quoted by Lord Stain at thirty. Saayak is entitled to decide that discretion should have been exercised, should have been exercised, not could have, should have. I might say, well, I would have exercised my discretion differently, but that doesn't mean the Secretary of State should have exercised his or her discretion differently. And Lord Wolfe talks about reviewing the matter. But that doesn't on the face of it give carte blanche to Saayak to say, well, we would have done something different, therefore we allow the appeal.
No, all you could say about that is the passage at G, Lord Wolfe observed that the commission were correct to regard it as their responsibility to determine questions of fact and law. So it's not just a traditional review. It's a review in which Saayak is making its own mind up about the facts, which it now cannot do because of the change in statutory language. And as I say, what I'm getting from this duo of cases is that specialist nature of the tribunal doesn't matter. That absent express words giving power, particular power in an appeal, what Lord Wolfe said, without statutory intervention, this is not a role which a court readily adopts. And there was unity in the court, sorry, in the House, about Lord Wolfe being right in that analysis. But Lord Hoffmann helpfully separates the issues underpinning that, at paragraph forty-nine and page sixty-two. Citing something else that Lord Wolfe said at the Court of Appeal, paragraph nine, Lord Hoffmann said, my lords, I will say at once that I think on each of these points, the Court of Appeal are right. In my opinion, the fundamental flaw and the reasoning of the commission is that although they correctly said that section four-one gave them full jurisdiction to decide questions of fact and law, they didn't make sufficient allowance for certain inherent limitations. First, in the powers of the judicial branch of government, and secondly, within the judicial function in the appellate process. Something akin to what he just put to me, that that power may not actually be as broad as it looks. These arise from the principle of the separation of powers. The commission is a court, a member of the judicial branch of government. It was created as such to comply with article six. However broad the jurisdiction of a court or tribunal, whether at first instance or on appeal, it is exercising a judicial function, and the exercise of that function must recognize the constitutional boundaries between judicial, executive and legislative power. Secondly, the limitations on the appellate process. They arise from the need in matters of judgment and evaluation of evidence to show proper deference to the primary decision maker. So even though, as the Court of Appeal had held, this was a power to find facts in a tribunal of great specialist knowledge and judicial knowledge, inherent in the process are these two limitations, the separation of powers and the need to, as it were, give weight on the carry-on using the outdated word deference to the decision below. So two propositions there, that firstly, absent clear words giving a jurisdiction to an appellate body, the appellate body will not normally exercise a fact-finding function.
Or not exercise a what?
A fact-finding function. Or substitute its judgment for the judgment of the body being appealed against. And again, I'm being somewhat archaeological in this approach by going down in time, back in time, as it were, yeah, authorities. But can I take you finally to Ali to give weight to that set of propositions? And we find out at tab seven. A recent decision, looking back, so twenty sixteen decision of the Supreme Court.
Yes.
If I take you to paragraph forty-four, it's the judgment of Lord Reed again, as his lordship said.
Yeah. I was interested to note on the way through, that in paragraph forty-two, sorry, I should start, thirty-nine, he refers to Huang.
Yep.
Forty-two, he quotes Lord Bingham.
Yes.
And in paragraph thirteen of Lord Bingham, he says, the appellate immigration authority is not reviewing the decision of another decision maker. It's deciding whether or not it's unlawful to refuse the interment. And he's doing so on the basis of up-to-date facts. And if you go back to Huang, he amplifies that a bit more.
Yeah.
And as far as I can tell, the appeal provisions under consideration of Huang simply gave a right of appeal to adjudicator.
Yes.
Didn't say anything more than that.
Yeah, there was a Court of Appeal decision of Lord Justice Sonny Brown, which, can't remember the name of it, I'm afraid, which said that the intention of Parliament in the immigration appellate system was to regard the appellate tribunal as a continuation of the decision.
I recall such an observation.
And that, of course, is no longer true since Begum, on the, as it were, modern assessment, analysis of appellate powers. And so one has to regard with huge care the actual construction of earlier statutory schemes since Begum. And so in what is a very recent statement of the law, of longstanding, we see what the paragraph forty-four and forty-five.
Yes.
What Lord Reed said, stealing with article eight at paragraph forty-four, and even within article eight, giving appropriate weight. So this is article eight where the court is itself, of course, a judicial authority which is bound to give effect to the human right. And he says at paragraph forty-four, to give appropriate weight to the reasons relied on by the Secretary of State to justify the decision. In that connection, Lord Bingham gave as examples a case where attention was paid to the Secretary of State's judgment, that the probability of deportation for serious offences committed had a general deterrent effect. Another case, a threat to public order, and continued at paragraph sixteen. The giving of weight to factors such as these is not, in our opinion, aptly described as deference. It is performance of the ordinary judicial task of weighing up the competing considerations on each side and according appropriate weight to the judgment of a person with responsibility for given subject matter and access to special resources of knowledge and advice. And again, to come back to Lord Justice Snowden's point of analog between this sort of exercise and what the local authority is concerned with under section eighty-eight. Where the local authority is concerned to determine whether it believes evidence is relevant to a connection between a criminal and the applicant, then it has responsibility for that given subject matter. And then to carry on with the citation within the citation, that is how any rational judicial decision maker is likely to proceed. It may be helpful to say more about this point. Wherein an appellate court or tribunal has to reach its own decision after hearing evidence, it does not in general simply start afresh and disregard the decision under appeal. This was made clear in Secnata, concerned with an appeal to quarter sessions against a licensing decision taken by a local authority in hope and glory, Lord Justice Tolson put it matter this way. It is right in all cases that the magistrate's court should pay careful attention to the reasons given by the licensing authority for arriving at the decision under appeal, bearing in mind that Parliament has chosen to place responsibility for making such decisions on local authorities. And so again, that's a situation where it was clear that the magistrates heard evidence, made fact findings. So it didn't start from a clean sheet of paper in the way that masters, the judges in chambers used to do for masters. So that's my trawl through the authorities before we.
Do you not suggest that that, it might be suggested that that is analogous with the current situation where the, seems to be common ground that the appellate tribunal is hearing evidence, evidence which, it's hypothesized, is not going to have been heard by the decision maker.
Our first ground doesn't touch that, our second ground does. So our first ground goes to the question, at what date is the first tier tribunal focusing itself? I trawl through the authorities rather recklessly because they may or may not relate to either ground, rather than divide them up under each ground. When we come to ground two, where When we come to ground two, where ex-hypothesy, I was wrong on ground one, and the first-tier tribunal decides for itself, as at the present time, what the situation is, then even then, then your ladyship's quite right, then it's analogous. And within that analogy, I will place reliance on that, those cautionary words in the authorities.
Can I just, I'm sorry to backtrack, go back a moment to the act itself?
Yeah.
And you've shown us various rights of appeal. Looking at paragraph thirty-one, page twenty of our bundle, "The applicant or irrelevant person may appeal against a decision to refuse to grant, or to grant."
Yes.
Who is a relevant person?
For those purposes, it could be a neighbour or...
Tenant, perhaps?
Well, anybody, yes, anybody can affect it by the decision, certainly a tenant.
Right.
Potentially somebody who has consulted...
Oh, it's a defined term in paragraph thirteen, I'm told, yes.
Thirteen?
Yes, in paragraph thirteen, sorry to interrupt, if someone else put an interest in land, someone who's managing a having control, because you could have the applicant not being the proposed licence holder, or someone who's subject to an obligation of management.
Right.
So you could have a situation where, under the first one, the interest in land, you could have the free holder of the building challenging the licence, for example, if there's a leaseholder supplied saying, "I don't think there should be licences granted." Alternatively, you could have a situation where the person applying for the licence proposes to have no obligations imposed on them at all under it, because they're going to have a professional managing agent. That person may then want to be heard about the terms of the licence condition. So that's what it's covering, is the slightly unusual situations where the person in control of the land doesn't actually want to have responsibility for what's going on with the building, that's the relevant person test.
Right, thank you.
Sorry, central.
Sorry, no, not at all, that's very helpful. It may help there to look at three B as well, a person excluded is any tenant under a lease with an unexpired term of three years or less. So some tenants are, can be interested persons, yeah. So, sorry, having then, as it were, blunderbussed the authorities at the court, can I try and disentangle and set out what we say under ground one?
This is the date point.
I'm so sorry.
The date point.
This is the date point. It's obviously not our case that evidence is inadmissible, plainly evidence is admissible, live evidence is heard. Our point is that the evidence can only be directed to the situation as at the date when the decision under appeal is made.
So if the authority refuses a licence and the applicant appeals and is convicted of some housing offence after the date of the local authority's decision, but before the appeal, the local authority could not rely on that offence to show that whatever the position might have been at the date of the decision, the applicant is not a fit and proper person?
We say it could rely on the offence if the offence was committed before the decision.
But you don't...
Suppose it wasn't? Well, if it wasn't, then it's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant, right.
But how would you know that somebody had committed the offence unless they'd been convicted?
You don't, which is why we say the word unaware is an apt word to cover a situation which actually obtained, of which the local authority was...
So I thought the point that's been put to you is that something had happened which the authority took the view was criminal conduct, somebody had been charged, and they refused a licence. The person appealed on the basis that the authority shouldn't have formed that view, but after the decision and before the hearing of the appeal, the person is actually convicted. I thought the point that's been put to you is, on your test, that the fact of the conviction would be unable to be taken into account.
Yeah, the fact of the conviction may or may not be admissible, given the evidential provisions about, I'll start that again. The local authority can say, "This person was guilty of this offence at the time we made the decision, and the evidence that he was guilty of this offence at the time we made this decision is the subsequent conviction." It's evidence, not an event.
Yeah, but if the offence was committed after the date of the local authority's decision, the local authority could not say, "Well, we had good reason at the time, and what's more, this person's been convicted of..."
That's right. But the proper course for a local authority then would be to have granted the licence and then revoke it.
And then revoke it, I see.
But in the former case that I thought was being put to you, which is the, what we subsequently know to be the offence was committed before the licensing decision was taken, you're saying the local authority can't rely upon the fact that somebody was convicted of the offence, so what happens? Do they have to try and prove that the offence was committed by evidence in front of the tribunal, but unable to actually say, "It has been proved beyond reasonable doubt"?
No, Lord, this is an evidential point rather than an event point. It's always, since the Civil Evidence Act nineteen sixty-eight, been admissible evidence of a fact that there was a subsequent conviction. The subsequent conviction's not the fact, so...
It's the criminal offence. The distinction is between a criminal offence committed before or after the decision. If the criminal offence is committed before the decision, then you can rely on evidence to show that that criminal offence was committed before, irrespective of the fact that that evidence comes to light afterwards.
Precisely.
That's the point, but I think my Lord, Lord Justice Lewison put to you when you accepted that if the offence and the evidence of it all occurred after the event, it's irrelevant.
Yes, that's the way we put the case. And there are other, I'm saying nuances, other factual situations that have arisen in cases which are apt to confuse. So there are a number of examples in the authorities where the first-tier tribunal was held entitled to rely on what it saw in a site visit, which occurs between the decision under appeal and the hearing of the appeal. What none of those authorities do is tell you whether the things seen at the site were different to the situation obtaining as at the date of the decision. So of course a site visit is common, where relevant to the condition of premises, and we say, where the site visit can tell the tribunal what the situation actually was as at the date of the decision under appeal, then of course, what the tribunal sees is relevant and admissible. If, on the other hand, the purpose of the applicant showing the tribunal the site is that they've done some works, then the tribunal cannot have regard to things that have changed, we say. But that's the way we put our case on this.
Yeah.
And you've seen from the skeleton how we attempt to, as it were, unpeel the onion of statutory construction here by starting with the plain words. We start with the proposition that the word rehearing in paragraph thirty-four tells you nothing. The first important word in paragraph thirty-four, perhaps we can go back to it. Page twenty-two behind tab three. Is the word but...
But.
Obviously it's proviso, whatever follows from the word but could not have been within the jurisdiction of the tribunal if that word hadn't been there. And Parliament must have known the word rehearing was apt to a range of meanings, and here it is, limiting by whatever follows, in some way, the scope of the word rehearing used in that line.
So just to focus on this case for a moment, you would say, would you, that the tribunal ought to have decided that Miss Hussein was not a fit and proper person as at the date of the local authority's decision, and that if through her subsequent efforts in becoming an accountant and being accredited to the various organisations, she had become a fit and proper person, she should have reapplied for a licence, which the authority might then have been obliged to grant.
Yes, and although that may sound cumbersome, what it does is preserve the sanctity of the process by which the local authority gives its minded two letters, hears representations, is the primary decision-maker. And just to correct slightly factually the situation, what we say is that, in practice, what we're dealing with here is FH Co., and FH Co. was decided by the appellate tribunal here not to be an appropriate licence holder as at the date of the decision. So its starting point was that it wasn't, it wouldn't have been granted the licence had events not changed. So it's a very clear case where but for that temporal decision, the appeal would have gone the other way. Then we get to the proviso, may be determined by having regard to matters for which the authority were unaware. Well, I start with the word may, if this is intended to encompass matters which have occurred since the decision was taken, then surely the tribunal must have regard to matters which have occurred since, if they're relevant. And so the word may is very loose there, but then we get to that word at the end of the line, unaware. As you know, we say simply, "You can't be unaware of something if it doesn't exist." It is only apt to deal with things which exist but which you happen not to know.
Well, I mean, as a matter of language, why, I mean, I am unaware of what, you know, I will eat for lunch tomorrow, I don't know. I mean, aware just means whether I know or whether I don't.
No.
I mean, why isn't unaware apt to cover both things which are currently in existence, of which you are unaware, and things which you are unaware because they are not yet in existence? As a matter of language, isn't it entirely neutral?
I think the premise is false with respect, the state of a man's mind is as much a fact as the state of his digestion, as the Victorian authorities were apt to say. You're not unaware of what you'll eat for lunch tomorrow, my lord, because you can't see the future, not a question of being unaware. Unaware, as a matter of, it's simple English, we would say, means something you don't know about which exists or has existed. Otherwise, one's into metaphysical constructs. I'm unaware of when I'm going to die, but that doesn't mean this is the sort of thing that Parliament could possibly have intended to apply here. It's looking at a decision which is vested in a primary decision-maker, riven with judgements, and which has been reached after a considerable process of what Parliament calls consultation.
You say that as a matter of, certainly English in this context, when you're focusing on the decision made by a decision-maker, normally you wouldn't actually challenge a decision-maker's decision on the basis of hindsight, or in the light of things that have happened since the decision, the question is whether that decision was correct or not correct at the time when it was made. So if Parliament is talking about something of which the decision-maker is unaware, you say that means something which they might have known about had it been brought to their attention, but they didn't for any reason know about it, rather than something that might happen in the future.
Yeah. And interestingly, it's not always helpful to look to see what Parliament has done within other contexts, but, and it's obviously a matter of logic about whether Parliament could have used different language, but it did use different language in a different statute. If we look at tab two. So a preceding act, the Nationality Et Cetera Act two thousand and two. It's Immigration Tribunal Appeals, and under subsection four of eighty-five, "On an appeal under section eighty-two against a decision, the tribunal may consider any matter which it thinks relevant to the substance of the decision, including a matter arising after the date of the decision." So your lordship's lunch, which would have occurred afterwards, could certainly be taken into account by the immigration tribunal.
The logic of the position adopted by the upper tribunal in this case, I think, is that if the upper tribunal were to find that the FTT had made an error of law, thus setting aside the decision, it would be entitled to remake the decision based on facts which had occurred between the date of the FTT's decision and his own decision.
That must be right, as a matter of logic, although when we come actually to consider what Mr. Justice Fancourt said, I'm sorry to say, I'm going to argue that he got very confused between is and was.
And I think it would also follow that the same is true of this court.
Yes.
Because under the Tribunals, et cetera, et cetera, act, if we were to allow an appeal on point of law, we could remake the decision.
Yes, because you've got all the powers of the inferior tribunal, yeah.
Well, not only that, but I think there's a specific provision in the act, in the two thousand and seven act, which says that we can, and so we would also be in a position to hear more evidence about what had happened since, between the date of the upper tribunal's decision and our decision.
As a matter of logic, your logic must be right. And while we're still on, we've got these passages open, the, under Schedule five, paragraph thirty-four, the power of the tribunal is that it can confirm, reverse or vary the decision of the local authority. That doesn't assist. If one goes to the Housing Act nineteen ninety-six, which we've got in tab one. This was where Parliament moved challenges to homelessness decisions from the judicial review venue to the county court. And in doing that, it limited the right of appeal to an appeal on a point of law, but even with that tight remit, if one looks at...
Subsection three.
Two oh four three, it's the same confirming, quashing or varying, so one doesn't get anything from the statutory language of the remit of the consequence, as it were, of a successful appeal.
Well, there is a slight decision, a slight difference, isn't there? If an appeal to the court succeeds, the court would normally quash the decision and send it back to the local authority, or the housing authority to make its own decision, it wouldn't direct the housing authority to provide accommodation for the homeless person.
Normally, yes. Yes, it gave rise to a whole subset of arguments when the judicial review was the venue, or the Adbin Court was, rather. My only point is that the statutory language about what happens on a successful appeal is apt to cover the whole range of what a rehearing might come out to. So that's what we say about the actual plain language, that the context here is, as I say, the starting point being that the local authority decides whether to designate the area a talk. Within that designation, it then conducts quite a complex exercise in relation to each licence application, with the minded two letters, the representations, et cetera. with the minded two letters, the representations, et cetera. And it's then the primary decision maker. Within that primary decision making process, Parliament either expressly or implicitly devolved to it all range of judgements. That scheme, that entire process of making a local authority a primary decision maker in that way, would require plain language to displace its fact finding and its judgment reaching conclusions. And we get that from Raymond and Bacon. And all of that makes it very unlikely in the context of this scheme that Parliament intended the whole thing to be bypassed. So in effect, if people didn't bother making representations to the local authority, but simply awaited the outcome, then appealed, and then threw all their armoury at the appeal and said, now you make the decision as at the date of this appeal, please, you essentially cut out the process altogether.
What do you say about cases like Hope and Glory, which appears to have been approved by Supreme Court, which is a licensing appeal where statute entrusts the decision to the licensing authority that is in the process of appeal, where the magistrates are entitled to find the facts and although they have to give deference to whatever that means, the not lightly overturn the decision of the licensing authority, they can.
My lord, it's very difficult to disentangle ground one and ground two because deference and these constitutional boundaries quite often overlap between these two grounds. But focusing as closely as I can on the question of when the, at what date the FTT is focusing its direction, all of those, none of those authorities assist on that. They assist on ground two, or might do. What I'm saying is the notion that Parliament intended the first tier tribunal to make its decision as at the date of the appeal rides roughshod over a whole lot of things, including deference and the division of power, as it were. And that those things would require the clearest language.
And therefore, you say, do you, that to the extent that the word unaware is capable of bearing a broader meaning and a narrower meaning, we should give it the narrower meaning in order not to compromise the integrity of the discretionary scheme?
Yes, and in essence, that's what Lord Wolf was saying in Raymond, which was approved of by the lordships. When he said absent clear statutory language, it wouldn't be the specialist tribunal's job to find facts. And then he made, of course, find facts as at the date of the appeal. So my final layer of statutory construction under ground one is what we call the unlikelihood, almost calls an absurdity, consequence of the other side's argument. And as I say, the consequence here of Mr. Justice Fancourt's approach to this is that the local authority's decision, when appealed, is simply a stepping stone to the actual decision.
Yeah, well, that's the same point you've just been making.
Exactly, and
Both sides came up with absurdities which they deployed before Mr. Justice Fancourt, and it's always possible to think of them.
Quite, and you've got our point that actually what Parliament must have intended here is that if there is any substantial change between the decision appeal and the time of the appeal, the proper way of dealing with that is a re-application, so that the local authority is put back in the position of primary decision maker. And what Mr. Justice Fancourt sought to do with that argument, with the argument that analogous appeal rights within the same statute give rise to mad outcomes if you deal with the matters as they stand at the date of the appeal, such as where an enforcement notice has been issued and been complied with, is to say, this particular species of appeal within this act and within this schedule is forward looking. And if we could just look at his judgment at paragraph sixty-six. So in the core article. At tab six. Dealing with my argument that if you construe paragraph thirty-four in the way the first tier tribunal does, you must construe all the similar wording in the same act. He says in paragraph thirty-six, the touchstone, in my judgement, is always the nature of the decision under appeal. The statutory provisions in issue and whether matters happen subsequently are relevant to assessing whether the decision of the authority is shown to be wrong.
Sorry, I've lost where you are.
I'm so sorry. At tab six, paragraph sixty-six, it's on page fifty-eight.
Okay, yep.
And I'm going to come back to this in a moment, so if I may, I'll get a short cut to the final sentence of paragraph sixty-six. So in dismissing this argument, that is because the reality of the appeal is a contention that a licence should now be granted or allowed to remain in place.
You say that isn't the reality of the appeal.
That's the reality of all appeals. It doesn't matter whether it's an appeal against revocation or failure to grant or an appeal against a civil penalty.
Well, I thought you were going to say that the reality of appeal is the licence should have been granted.
I'm going to come back to that because I really want to make the point.
This paragraph is quite a mixture between present tense and past tense.
It's a point I was going to make. It's not just this paragraph, I'm afraid. Let me jump, let me make that point. I'm jumping about, but let me do it while we're on it. His lordship starts with this array of is and was at paragraph fifty-one. There is, in my judgement, no reason to read paragraph thirty-four two of Schedule five, as if it said that matters that occur after the date of the authority's decision are to be disregarded, even if they're relevant to the question of whether the authority's decision was wrong. Well, that's not where his lordship lands, at paragraph sixty-six. Then if we jump to paragraph sixty-four, it gets very confounded. It seems to me the fallacy in the arguments of the council based on absurdity is that the question on appeal is not considered, starting with a blank sheet of paper, on the basis only of the facts as they stand on the hearing date. The question is always whether the decision of the authority is wrong. Hastings and Turner, that's not what Hastings and Turner says, but be that as it may. And depending on the nature of the decision under appeal and the statutory wording, events that have happened subsequently may be relevant or irrelevant to that assessment. For example, the mere fact that the authority has completed all specified works is likely to be irrelevant to the question of whether it was right to have served notice and entered to do the works in the first place. On the other hand, evidence of the condition of the property discovered during the works may be highly relevant to that question. The fact that a house has belatedly been licensed is irrelevant to the question of whether an offence was committed at an earlier time. And then over the page at sixty-five, in all cases, the FTT is required to have regard to the decision of the authority as well as to any relevant evidence given to it at the rehearing. But that, of course, begs the question, relevant to what? It is not required to decide the appeal on the basis of facts post-dating the decision if they cast no light on the question of whether the decision of the authority was wrong. But with respect, that's exactly the opposite of what his lordship ends up saying. The effect of his judgment is he is bound to have regard to facts which show that the decision is wrong. But then sixty-six, as your lordship just put to me, there is, in fact, your ladyship as well, this is and was scattered throughout it. And there are two problems to that.
Just pausing there, sorry to interrupt you, just pausing there. If the train of thought that his lordship was going with in the earlier passages had been followed through, you wouldn't have quarrelled with it because if you accept on our case of the post-decision evidence of conviction of an offence that was committed before, and everything he said in the paragraph you just quoted would be right because that would cast light on whether the decision was right or wrong.
Yes, was right.
So you've got fresh evidence, but it actually helps the, it's relevant to the question of whether or not the authority took the right view.
Yes, or for example, somebody being acquitted on appeal subsequently. And so it shows the local authority was wrong to regard them as having committed the offence.
Yes. But you say that that's then morphed somehow into a question of whether or not that person is now a fit and proper person, rather than whether they were at the time of the decision a fit and proper person.
I'm sorry to say that his lordship inconsistently used the word is and was in that described a process by which he confused whether the point of the appeal was to determine whether the local authority was wrong or whether the local authority is now wrong in the light of all the material.
Well, yes, just coming back for a moment to this case. As I understand it, correct me if this is wrong, the local authority's case was that Miss Hussein was not a fit and proper person because she was associated with her parents who had committed criminal offences, that she was involved in the running of the business to a much greater extent than she admitted. And that since at the time of the local authority's decision, her company was her, effectively, and wasn't trading. The company couldn't be regarded as a fit and proper person. The FTT decided that the inference which the council drew about the association was not justified on the facts. And they also decided that because Miss Hussein had progressed in her accountancy studies, had become accredited, and the company now had a track record, she was at the date of their decision a fit and proper purpose. For person. The point you are now making only goes to the second of those findings, doesn't it? Doesn't go to the first.
No, it doesn't.
Namely, the FTT having decided that the council were wrong in drawing the inference that they did.
Your lordship's absolutely right in everything you've just said, but can I just disentangle it slightly? Focusing entirely on ground one, as your lordship has just put to me, I'm not challenging under ground one the FTT's conclusion that she was fit and proper and that the authority was wrong about inferences under this ground. My launching point on ground one is the FTT's own finding that FH Co. was not an appropriate licence holder as at the date of the decision under appeal. So if I can knock down the FTT's having regard to anything since the decision, I win on ground one. And it doesn't matter what the tribunal's view was about Farina Hussein, simply because FH Co. was not practising or operating. So that, it's a very pure point on temporal analysis because of the FTT's finding about FH Co. as at the date of the decision. But everything that your lordship put to me about inference, et cetera, is something we're just about to come to on ground two, of course. Can I make another criticism of the effect of the passages we've just looked at in Mr. Justice Fancourt's judgment? As I say, our primary point is that his lordship oscillates between focusing on the date of the decision under appeal and the date of the appeal. But also resonant in that is a a complete lack of coherence about whether the tribunal is bound to have regard to matters which have occurred since, if they're relevant, and query relevant to what. The simple statement of law ought to be, if the first tier tribunal was right, that the first tier tribunal is directing itself to the situation as at the date of the appeal. And any evidence relating to the fitness and propriety of the applicant as at that date must be had regard to. Not may. Once one determines what it is that evidence has to be relevant to, it has to be taken into account. And nowhere is that set out.
Subject, of course, to the Tame side point that it's a matter of the decision maker to decide what is or is not relevant.
True, but once you've decided it is relevant, you have to have regard.
Yes.
That's my point. And because the word may is in there, it's no good saying everything is permissive. One needs to be rigorous about this. It's what Lord Justice May said in Dupont. When you're looking at the jurisdiction in these matters, it's not a question of discretion. The judgment, the, sorry, the way in which an appeal is approached on a statutory basis has to be consistent.
Well, on your analysis, the word may is used in this context, is used in a permissive sense in giving the power to the tribunal to take into account something which they would not otherwise have the power to do.
Well, yeah. But that's because it's in the proviso.
That's because it comes after but.
Exactly, because it's in the proviso, and therefore it is.
So the but and the may actually fit together.
They do. That's why we say our construct works. And compare that with what we looked at in the two thousand and four act, where the, sorry, the nineteen ninety-six act, where Parliament allowed post-decision events to be had regard to. It actually puts in there, if relevant. So Parliament's entirely capable of defining boundaries around the permissive use of later events. So that's our point on ground one, unless there's anything else I can touch on, I'll move on to ground two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So as I say, the premise of ground one is that we don't challenge what the tribunal found about Farina Hussein. Here we do. And can I just run through the factual background relevant to this issue? Very unusually, this is an authority which held off its decision making on the licence applications until it had decided on criminality. So almost uniquely, probably, it had interviews under caution with everybody concerned before it made decisions on the licence applications, which ordinarily wouldn't, of course, happen.
Well, that was actually used as a stick to beat you with in the respondent's cross appeal, wasn't it?
It is, but this is because everybody fails to grasp and has failed to grasp so far the evidence which emerged from it. So can I run through it? So the starting point is Naseem, Farina Hussein's mother, interviewed under caution over more than an hour and a half. Of course, you had regard to the way in which that interview went. In the course of that, on sixty occasions.
Six zero?
Six zero occasions, Naseem Hussein said, I don't run the business, my family, indicating Farina amongst others. indicating Farina amongst others. I'm sorry to use first names for shorthand, I'm not intending to be familiar. Ran the business. That was evidence. I'll come back to the way in which everybody's dealt with it. But what Mr Justice Fancourt said was that it was inferential that that's what happened. It wasn't inferential. The local authority interviewed Nassim. She said on more than sixty occasions, my family, including this woman sitting next to me, ran the business. To say it's not entitled to have regard to that would be absurd. Secondly, Farina was there. Now, yes, we get into inferential territory here. You'd say, and I do say, ordinarily, you would have expected somebody to correct that if it was wrong. When you look at.
Not the interviewee?
I'm sorry?
If they're not the interviewee?
Well, to start from the word we, my lord, because when, for the first ten or fifteen pages of the interview, what Farina is doing is preventing, or attempting to prevent, questions being asked of her mother by saying, we were not called here to answer those. So yes, is the answer to your lordship's question. The purpose of the interview was not to interview her, but she intervened. And so it would be realistic, and in, as for the local authority, to draw an inference that silence there is acceptance. And again, I'm not going to drag you through it, of course, but it's a very lengthy interview from which.
Sorry, does that actually follow? I mean, if Miss Hussein was there were to assist or accompany her mother, she would intervene if she thought the questioning of her mother was inappropriate. But to take my lord's point, the interviewee is still her mother.
Yes, but that's why I keep saying.
Her role is limited to, I mean, why wouldn't it be an appropriate inference just to think that she wasn't there as an interviewee? She was there simply to stop inappropriate questions of her mother. So why would you assume that she would, as it were, start arguing with her mother about her mother's evidence?
Well, I can strip this into parts, or I can use common sense on it. Stripping it into parts, I say, in defending her mother, she used we repeatedly. Secondly, as a matter of common sense, if one reads that interview, she's not just at the beginning, but also at the end. What's the relevance of these questions? I don't think they're relevant. We don't think they're relevant. We didn't come here to answer these questions. Read as a whole, it is absolutely clear she knew what was going on. And she associated herself with her mother to the extent of saying we and defending her. And it's entirely realistic to say that not once to the sixty odd occasions when the mother says, my family, including my daughter, ran the business, to have said anything about it is striking. To carry on with the chronology, after that, there were interviews with all the family under caution. And again, the local authority conducted those. And again, although there are no comment answers, this is a local authority's experience of this family by asking them questions, seeing their reaction. And as part of that process, all of the family members except Farina Hussein gave statements, written statements. And again, in the course of that, which is obviously collaborative, the statement of Nassim essentially repeated what she said about the family involvement. Let me just look at that. It's supplementary bundle, page 116.
116.
116, please, my lord. So she makes it of her own free will, voluntarily intended to be further interviewed. She says rightly, she's the owner of the relevant properties. And then in the fourth paragraph, my family, namely my husband Tariq, son Wahab and daughter Farina, and sometimes others, assist with the day-to-day running of the business, which includes the preparation of applications and correspondence with the council. My husband deals with the maintenance. So signed. At no point in any of that process did Farina make a statement denying any of that.
She does later on, doesn't she?
Only in the appeal, not before the decision was made.
Well, she makes representations of it.
She does, and let's look at that, if we may. 169 in this. So the first paragraph refers to six letters. I would like to submit that I have personally never been prosecuted for any offence involving fraud or other dishonesty, nor have I failed to comply with housing and tenant law. I understand Waltham Forest considers I'm not a fit and proper person to hold a property licence due to the convictions of my parents. I do not agree with your decision to refuse licences to me because of the actions of my parents. My mother's conviction has now been spent. And again, this is the rather sort of legalese approach which she adopted in the interview. And my parents are truly remorseful. In addition, they have, as you're aware, also been fined heavily for their conduct. I believe that it would be overreaching to extend the refusal of the licence to me as their daughter when I've not been a party to any criminal or civil proceedings relating to this matter. Nowhere, does she say, and I had nothing to do with the business. Everything my mother has always said in my presence and in her written statement about me being involved in the day-to-day running of the business is untrue. And she goes on to say, I've enrolled on accreditation scheme, et cetera. So nowhere prior to lodging an appeal does she say, oh, by the way, everything my mother has always said, swastika.
Now, this is in response to the minded to letter, isn't it?
That's what we just saw. Yes, we don't have the minded to letter, unfortunately. But that letter is the response to it.
But unless the minded to letter made the point that you've just made, why would she respond to it?
Exactly.
No, it does. The minded to letter says you're closely associated with the offence.
So where's the minded?
Or we've had it, I'm afraid.
But it doesn't say, but you never. So where's the minded to letter? It's not in the bundle.
No, it's not in the bundle. We can obviously get copies of.
Well, we've got the local authority's, well, may not be the minded to letter.
Yeah.
Page 172 is Mr Beech's letter which makes the point about association.
Yeah. The best we've got is at 172, in which Mr Beech on 5th November says, with regard to your own situation, section 89.3 of the Act makes it clear that your close association with persons who are judged not to pass the fit and proper test, i.e. your parents, means you cannot be regarded as fit and proper.
But I mean, your point that she hadn't said, I have nothing to do with the business, would be better if the letter to which she was responding said, you have everything to do with the business and you didn't deny it when you attended with your mother for interview. If it just says, you are your parents' daughter and they've been convicted, then it's difficult to see you can make much out of it.
No, I'm not going to extemporise about what that letter says. We will get it up to you. But of course, I take your point that it's no good looking at a response and criticising it for an absence of detail unless you've seen.
Well, even the 5th November letter doesn't really make the point as clearly. It's an inference possibly on the basis that one looks at the penultimate paragraph. You'd be prepared to grant property licence in the event there's a suitable third-party licence holder was identified unconnected to your family, who would have full day-to-day control of the letting and management of the properties. It could be inferential saying, well, because of your connection with the property business, the family property business, we're not prepared to regard you as fit and proper. But on the face of it, it appears to be simply because of her association with her parents. In other words, as my lord says, you're your parents' daughter. They've been naughty and therefore we don't regard you as fit and proper.
Yes, and of course, we'll see what that letter says when we get it. But of course, I take your ladyship's point. If one was looking at this as a fairness, hear the other side. What I'm building up to is that the situation before the local authority as at the date of its decision. And we see what was in the local authority's mind when we look at, still in this bundle, page 216. This itself postates the decision, but it's retrospective. Letter of the 20th of February 2019. This is the infamous thirteen questions letter, which was never answered. But in the penultimate paragraph on 216, the reason the council has for believing that Miss Hussein shared responsibility arise from the answers given in her presence by her mother, Mrs Hussein, under caution on 26 September. We attach the transcript in which you'll see that Mrs Hussein, through the interpreter, made it clear the letting of premises was a family-run business and said, it's in her name and the family run it. Her husband, the son and daughter, they run the business. The statement was not contradicted during that interview by Miss Hussein. Mrs Hussein went on to say through the interpreter, she said she's the owner, but her husband and her children run the business. They do the day-to-day dealings with the business. When questioned regarding which daughter she was referring to, she clarified she was referring to Farina. So that's what the local authority as of around that time was.
But we're not supposed, we're not allowed to look at this?
You're allowed to look at it as evidence of what it was the authority believed at the time of the decision.
This predates the decision?
It's postdates the decision by a couple of months, I think.
Yeah, but if we're playing linguistic games, the start of that paragraph says the reason the council has for believing, not had.
That's because it's responding to an invitation to get rid of all the litigation and grant licences to FHCO. So it's a continuing state of affairs that the authority is referring to. But it has this, but if your lordship thinks it's immaterial.
I'm just exploring the logical result of your submission.
Logically, if I can persuade your lordship that this refers back to the local authority's mindset as at the date of the decision, it's admissible. If I can't persuade you that it refers back to that mindset, it's inadmissible.
Well, is that is that a question for us at all? That would have been a question for the FTT.
Well, yes, quite.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a much more accurate way of what I should have said, if I put it. So but my point is that the local authority concluded that what Nassim said about it being a family business was true.
It does involve a certain degree of cherry picking of Nassim's statement since there were other statements in her that she made which were plainly false. Namely, I was guilty of no criminal offences and I wasn't party to the falsification of the documents.
It's really quite difficult to understand her mindset. Objectively, she's clearly guilty of the offences because she's the one in whose names these licences were applied for. She signed the declarations. So she's guilty of the offences. Query, who completed those? It's never been discovered. But yes, you can say it's cherry picking, but it's a particularly large cherry to pick when.
Because of the sixty hours.
Yeah. So that's, so as at the date of the decision-making process, the local authority had had all these interviews, had had all of that material from Nassim. It had the minded to letter, whatever it said, and the response for whatever value that is. We then get to the appeal. As I say, that was remote, which is a distinctly unhelpful way of allowing cross-examination to be conducted. It's nobody's fault, but it was distinctly unsatisfactory. Very importantly, Nassim did not give evidence, nor did Tariq. But the consequence of the tribunal's decision is that it disbelieved what Nassim had said on those sixty occasions or whatever it is about the family running it and in her statement.
Well, did it? Because, I mean, the way that the tribunal approached it, rightly or wrongly, was to say that although Nassim had said that her son, daughter and husband were involved in running the business, that she didn't give any indication as to who did what. And they seem to accept that Farina was responsible only for the bookkeeping.
But we've just seen the statement in which she said, they did the day-to-day running. My husband did the maintenance. So she did actually give some detail. And the, but the powerful thing we would advance, I won't say we would advance, is that this is a decision taken by the local authority about Nassim's credibility undermined by the first tier tribunal, which did not see her.
Yes.
Sorry. And yes, of course, if one is dealing with a completely fresh hearing, unencumbered by a decision-making below, of course, we'd say it would have been rational for the tribunal to have done that. Just. But what we say is, where the authority has had the advantage of two sets of interviews with Nassim, interviews, albeit no comment ones, with everybody else.
And a voluntary statement.
Exactly. And where, for whatever litigation reason, Nassim and Tariq were not presented to the tribunal, for the tribunal to say, well, we disagree with the local authority's view about Nassim, although we haven't seen her, is remarkable and simply cuts across whatever you call it, deference, weight to be given to the decision below, separation of powers. And nowhere does the first tier tribunal, or indeed Mr Justice Fancourt, say, he did this without having seen Nassim.
Well, they also make adverse findings against Tariq without having seen and heard him.
Yeah.
Because they make the finding on the balance of probability that he was probably the one who was responsible for filling in the forms.
They hear two witnesses out of four and say, we believe those. Well, yes, fine. As I say, it's a matter of rationality. But if you're going to give any weight at all to the Sagrada Ali line of authority, you'd at least expect the tribunal to say, we have the very great, we start with a disadvantage that we haven't seen two out of the four, and indeed the very one who at great length said all of these things, which provoked the local authority to make the decision. Despite that, for these reasons, we believe the following. And in fact, when you get to the tribunal's reasons, they're ludicrous. The judge, when sentencing Nassim, didn't say the family had anything to do with it. Well, of course he wouldn't. And that's an utter failure to understand criminal process. And this is not the picture of a tribunal giving weight. It's a tribunal giving lip service. The authority took this decision, we disagree with it. And to be fair to Mr Justice Fancourt, he struggled with this. When one looks at his judgment, can we go to it again in the core bundle? Tab six. Paragraph seventy-two. Sorry, I'm behind you. Core bundle, tab six, page fifty-nine, my lord.
Page?
Fifty-nine.
Yes.
Paragraph seventy-two. However, the real basis of what was ground four of the appeal, as I have answered it, is the FTT's alleged failure to have regard to the council's judgment and conclusions based on the matters that were known to it. The council's case is that it was right to reach the conclusion that Miss Hussein was implicated in, or at least closely connected to, her parents' wrongdoing. The evidence before Mr Beech in that regard was strong. Well, quite.
Is that the judge or is that him recording your submission?
No, that's the judge.
Well, I wasn't sure about that.
No, he goes on to say, though the council's factual conclusions about Miss Hussein's involvement was largely inferential. That's not my argument at all. But assume for the moment then against me, I don't believe that was my submission, but I believe it was the judge, but assume for the moment against me.
Well, your submission is it was strong.
Well, it's always been my submission, it was strong, but I. Well, it's always been my submission, it was strong, but it's my belief that the, I didn't say, "The counsel's factual conclusion about Miss Hussein's involvement was largely inferential."
Well, you said it was based on the direct evidence of Mrs Hussein.
Yeah. So my submission is that that's not the cycle of what I was saying to you, please, lordship. Yes. Then if we go to 78. Again, to give his lordship credit on this, in my view, sorry, in view of the factual material relating to Miss Hussein, it was before the counsel when it made its decision, the FTT's conclusion on appeal may not have been an obvious outcome. That's a lovely judicial understatement with respect. And again, it's a decision which would survive a rationality challenge if it was a pure rationality challenge that I'm making. But where one is starting from the point that the tribunal is supposed to pay deference to the decision of the primary decision-maker.
It's a bit difficult to put together grounds one and two, isn't it? I mean, if you were to fail on ground one, and the facts really had changed, which on the FTT's findings they had, difficult to see how deference comes into it, because the FTT would say, "Well, that was then and this is now, and we must decide the case on things as they are now."
I take that point. That's true of all the authorities which deal, which say you have to give deference, though, that many of those authorities...
Well, I know, that's why I find this whole concept of deference quite difficult, if, if the appellate body, whether it's the magistrates or the tribunal, takes into account things that have happened since the date of the decision.
Well, let's, we do a mind experiment with this then. That if the tribunal was entitled to have regard to matters as at the date of the appeal, it would still have to start, on my ground two, with the question, "What do we think about Farina?" Because she is FH Co. and let's have a look at her now. The counsel's case is that Nassim told the truth, that two years ago, or whatever it was, she was closely connected with everything I did in the business. It has to form a view about whether that was true, should form a view about whether that was true, because it has to give some regard to the counsel's decision. So it can't just start from, "What do we think now?" It's, in my submission, right to start with what the counsel said and then move on. If it had properly directed itself, it would have said, "Well, we haven't seen Nassim, we haven't seen Tariq. We've seen over a live link Farina." Speaking for myself, I would probably have agreed with what Farina told me, I think she was a credible witness, but I haven't seen the other witnesses. The local authority is entitled to the weight due to the primary decision-maker who's seen all these witnesses, et cetera. We start from the proposition, the local authority therefore cannot be shown to have been wrong in the first place. Now let's look at up-to-date material. And then the question is whether the up-to-date material displaces any of that. And so there's not a process that occurred here, and it's also very difficult to see how it would have resulted in a successful appeal if that had been the actual conduct. So of course I took your point, that it's very difficult to see how deference is due to be given where you're looking at a rolling situation. But logically, if you're going to give any weight at all to the decision below, you've got to start with...
Yeah, I mean, as I understood it, if you're wrong on your first part, let's just say you're wrong on ground one. As I understand it, you would start, as an appellate tribunal, from the proposition that the decision of the authority was correct.
Yes, it has to be shown to have been wrong originally.
I mean, I know you told us that in fact, in practice, it seems to be done differently, but you would start with some deference, because you'd assume that the onus is on the appellant to show that the original decision either was wrong when it was made on the basis of what was known at the time, or can now be shown to have been wrong having regard to what we now know.
Yes.
Which could have two limbs. Either what we now know was the case at the time...
Yes.
By something which the counsel was unaware, in the sense you've used that word, or something which actually has happened since, which shows that the position is wholly different.
Yeah, exactly.
Is sufficiently different that such that you don't, you're not stuck with what the local authority decided at first. And it's only that last one which looks really odd.
Yes.
The other, I mean, the other two phases in the analysis are, seem to be okay. I mean, logically, I mean, it would be an appropriate way to go as it, in giving deference to the, the local authority's original decision.
Yes, I wish I'd said all that. And in all events, the starting point is, what do you think about the local authority's judgment? And as I say, just nowhere in any of this is a, an understanding in that that was what was supposed to happen, and that it was so hampered by the absence of the critical witness, Nassim.
Yeah.
That's all I propose to say on ground two, unless there's anything else I can touch on. I'm so sorry. It's hopefully being pointed out to me, if you still have Mr Justice Fancourt's judgment at page 60, paragraph 76. This is the clearest way in which his lordship approached this point. In my judgment, there's no proper complaint here. The FTT failed to have regard to the counsel's conclusion. It heard in detail from Mr Beach about it, that it was required to make up its own mind about the same issues, with the benefit of further evidence, and in particular seeing Miss Hussein give evidence and being cross-examined. The FTT simply disagreed on the basis of all that it had heard with Mr Beach's conclusion. Well, again, that would have been the place to say, "It simply disagreed having not heard from the very witness that Mr Beach was wrong." Mr Beach was the author of that letter we saw, which set out the position in early 2019. So moving to ground three, if I may, this is a very short one, because it's, to be fair, academic, save that if I lose on the other two grounds, the matter goes, is going back to the first-tier tribunal to consider FH Co.'s...
Yeah, and you say they should consider Miss Hussein as well.
Exactly. You've got the point. And the reason for this, quite simply, is that Mr Justice Fancourt said, "The rationale of the FTT being required to consider Farina's failure to answer the 13 questions is that it could bear on the director's fitness and propriety." And at the material time, she was the only director. So if it can bear on her fitness and propriety, it would be very curious for the FTT to be told to reconsider the case, bearing in mind Farina's failure in 2019 to look at, to answer questions.
In a sense, the point really is that FH Co. is a separate legal person from Farina. And if Farina's failure to answer the 13 questions can affect a different legal person, it must be capable of affecting her herself.
Salomon and Sullivan has nothing to say about licensing. If a company that is actually an individual is applying for licences, and the question is whether that company is fit and proper, then of course you look through the corporate veil. And if, in this case, the corporate entity failed to answer the 13 questions, which go to the distance, if any, between Farina and FH Co. and the family, then they're relevant to her.
Sorry, I mean, I'll just stick my company lawyers' oar in for a second. I don't think you're actually piercing the veil, are you? Aren't you just saying that for the purposes of this regime, the person whose state of mind or fitness must be associated with the company is the person who is the sole director?
My lord, that will...
Or shareholder, or whatever.
That would be a perfectly good...
I mean, it's a question of attribution, isn't it?
It is a question of attribution. And it's simply artificial, under this licensing regime where you are dealing with associations, to say, "It's a company, therefore we ignore the individual." But whether this goes back to the FTT, of course, we say very unlikely, but if it does, it would be strange to have it hobbled by not being able to reconsider Farina as well as FH Co. That's our only point.
I suppose what might have been going through the judge's mind is the fact that Farina's position had rather become academic, because the only application she made in her own right was the one for the licence, which had already expired by the time of the appeal. And she wasn't, as I understand it, suggesting that anybody other than FH and Co. should have any fresh licence.
You're absolutely right, my lady. And the only way I can make this not academic is to say that if, if the whole matter goes back to the tribunal for FH Co.'s fitness and propriety now to be considered, it should start properly by looking at the fitness and propriety of Farina at the outset, and at least if it's entitled to have regard to later matters, 2019, and her failure to answer the 13 questions. That's all. It's almost academic, if not entirely. So, lords, my lady, those are our submissions. Of course, if there's anything else I can touch on, I'd be pleased to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr Bates?
My lords and my ladies, our case, as I hope you've seen from the written submissions, is that the tribunals below were right for the reasons they gave. And if I were a bolder advocate, I'd now sit down and leave it at that. But I'm afraid, for all of our sakes, I am not so bold. I've got half an hour. I think I can probably do ground one in that time. And it's probably the key part of this appeal. And it really turns on what's the nature of the appeal. My learned friends at various times have put it by reference to the date of the decision. It's difficult conceptually to separate ground one and ground two, because the deference comes in if it's much more of a public law-type decision. But our case is as follows. The tribunal hearing the appeal under paragraph 31 of Schedule 5 of the Housing Act 2004 is perfectly entitled to take into account material that's arisen between the date of the decision of the authority and the appeal itself. And we say there's three reasons for that. The first is, we say that emerges from the wording of Schedule 5 of the Housing Act 2004. And I'll spend rather more time in the learned friended, in particular on paragraph 34, subsection to paragraphs three and four of that provision. Secondly, we say the wider context supports us. And here, I don't intend to refer to immigration cases. I'll deal with those very briefly later on, simply to say, context is everything, and this is not immigration. I'll be taking you to the position before the Housing Act 2004. How did this work under the Housing Act 1985, which was the predecessor provisions? And I'll be suggesting that all parliament done in the 2004 Act is codified the practice under the 1985 Act, which was a mixture of judicial and statutory legislation. And then finally, I want to come back on what's said against us. And if I get all that done in the next 25 minutes, I should hopefully be at a convenient place to break. Can we start, not my learned friended, with the power to designate areas, et cetera, but with the actual appeal provisions at page 20 behind tab three of the authority's bundle? And paragraph 31 of Schedule 5 introducing the right of appeal to the tribunal?
Yeah.
The point I want to make in reading from paragraph 31 is that there's no limit at all on the grounds of any appeal. This isn't one of those appeals limited to a point of law. Anyone, so long as they're the applicant or the relevant person, which is, we canvassed earlier, is effectively a third party who might be affected in some way. The applicant or the relevant person can appeal for any reason against a decision to refuse, to grant, or any terms of the licence. And we say that's quite an important introductory point to make, because if you were looking to limit the nature of the appeal, and what my learned friend does, one way you would have done it is to say, "A point of law." And you then move, in our submission, to paragraph 34 on page 22.
Well, does that, does that follow? I mean, you can appeal to this court, for instance, against a trial judge's finding of fact. It's difficult, but you can do it. Or his evaluation of the facts, whether something is or isn't reasonable or negligent, or whatever it happens to be. So the fact that you've got an unrestricted right of appeal, in the sense you've just used that, doesn't necessarily tell you what the appeal court's going to do with such an appeal.
No, quite, no, quite, because that's in paragraph 34. So paragraph 31 simply tells us that the right of appeal has had no limit put on it at the gateway stage, effectively. Anything that's capable of being an appeal, fact, law, mixed question, evaluative judgment, anything that's capable of being appealed, can be appealed.
Yes.
It's paragraph 34 that then takes you to how the tribunal deals with that appeal. Paragraph 34, subparol one, takes us no further. That simply introduces us to the fact that we're now dealing with appeals against refusals or revocations. 34-2, we know from 2A that it will always be by way of rehearing, but may be determined by having regard to matters of which the authority were unaware. Now, just pausing here for a minute, picking up on my lord justice Snowden's point, there's no limit on the reasons why you were unaware of it. And we respectfully say it would be wrong to impose the temporal time limit that's sought here, precisely because the problem that my lord justice Snowden identified will arise. In this case, it's the relatively unusual one, where the landlord and the applicant says that they've managed to do something that changes the position, changes the evaluative judgement the authority made. "We've done something to improve our position." Of course, you will appreciate it, there's been a significant delay in getting this case on, caused by COVID drop-down among others, and the fact this is the second time this case has come to this court. We've had an early litigation about the effect of the early convictions. But this is going to be a proposition that applies both ways, applying to both evidence to help applicants and to help the local authorities. So take the example of someone convicted of an offence where the behaviour that gave rise to the conviction arises after the licensing application has been determined. So avoid the Civil Evidence Act point about the conviction simply being evidence of the prior act. A situation where someone has applied, the local authority has said, "We don't think you're fit and proper for reason A, B, C." After that, they're convicted of a serious offence of violence against one of their tenants. The answer isn't, as my learned friend says, for the tribunal to shut their mind to that. The answer is for the tribunal to take that into account and say that, "Well, whatever the previous position, you've now just been convicted of a serious offence of violence. You can't possibly be a fit and proper person."
Why wouldn't that be dealt with as a matter of revocation?
Because if you revoke, it'll be under section 93.5, and the revocation won't take effect until the determination of any subsequent appeal. So Mr Justice Fancourt deals with this in paragraph 93 of his judgment. I won't take you to it now, but this is why revocation isn't the answer. Revocation simply starts a process that leads to minded to, appeal, et cetera. And you can't, if you appeal, it doesn't kick in until the end of the appellate process. So you can have a situation where someone is manifestly unsuitable because of previous conviction, but on my learned friend's argument, you nonetheless grant them the licence. The revocation process starts, and sometime, could be months later if it's contested appeal, you finally get a conclusion on that. The answer is for the tribunal to make the decision then and there. And you get the indication and the support for that in my submission, in subparol three and four of paragraph 34. in subpar 3 and 4 of paragraph 34. Because subparagraph 3 is directing the tribunal to make a final decision that determines the rights between the parties. Confirm, reverse, or vary. Those are three final decisions. They're not like the Housing Act 96 provision that I put in, where it's confirm, quash, or vary. Quash, of course, would remit to the local authority the continued involvement. If it's confirmed, the decision's upheld. If it's reversed, the alternative view is reached. And if it's varied, that's primarily directed at licensed terms, rather than fit and proper person. You're getting a final decision by virtue of three.
Just taking your point about the bad behaviour after the event. So despite the relative speed with which these matters would normally come before a tribunal, we're postulating that somebody is both commits and is convicted of violence against a tenant after the decision is made, all right?
For my scenario, yes, although the range of wrongdoing is enormous.
All right, but let's just take that hypothetical example. So they both commit and are convicted of the offence. Why would not their conviction that offence? I can see why you say that might shed light on whether or not the local authority was right to decide that they were not a fit and proper person because it simply confirms that decision that they weren't. In other words, they've taken that decision on different grounds, but you've now got some extra ammunition that shows that they weren't at that time.
Right.
It doesn't matter whether they are now. The question is, were they then? It doesn't work in the reverse, though, does it? If somebody does something which shows themselves to be potentially a fit and proper person now as a result of something that's happened after the decision, that's not going to help you to decide whether the authority was right or wrong to refuse the licence.
No, so it comes back to, and this is the critical question on ground one, what decision? Is it a review of the decision of the local authority? Or is it the decision of the tribunal? And I say one of the pointers for the fact that it's the decision of the tribunal is this problem of subsequent arriving matters. Because imagine this material that shows that I'm now fit and proper. On my learned friend's analysis, it arises after their decision, so we can't take it into account. So you find I wasn't fit and proper on the first of January. That means I can't operate these properties. It's an offence to operate as a landlord with a property that is supposed to be licensed and is not so licensed, punishable by both criminal and by the 249A civil penalties. You can ultimately have banning orders made against you and be removed from being a landlord completely. So rather than have to have a situation where the appeal's dismissed, I wasn't fit and proper on the first of January, but something happens on the first of February that makes me fit and proper, and the appeal hearing is on the first of March. Rather than have that interregnum period where no one really knows what the position is, the tribunal decides the question as at the first of March, in that scenario. And there's nothing objectionable to that.
Well, why is there nothing objectionable? If the effect of the tribunal's decision is to licence somebody to operate the property during a period when they were not a fit and proper person, why is that not objectionable? Because your hypothesis is they weren't fit and proper on the first of January, but they became fit and proper subsequently.
Well, we're now getting into, the difficulty is, we're now starting to get into the realms of what the individual fact would be. So my imprinciple point is there's nothing objectionable to taking into account the material because you get the up-to-date decision. Of course, it would depend on what they do under 34.4 because that's the power to direct a grant on such terms as the tribunal may direct. They could direct it only from a certain date.
Can they do that?
Why not? Nothing stops them doing that. You frequently see, for example, tribunals directing licences to be granted for a short period of time, say, two years, to enable someone to regularise the position.
Well, they did it with FH Co, they gave it three years instead of five.
Quite, and there's upper tribunal authority, involving this local authority, in fact, where I think that was their policy at the time. If you unlawfully converted your property into an HMO in breach of planning law, you've got a very short licence to enable you to regularise the position, but you didn't get the five-year licence that a good landlord would get. There's no rule of law that everyone has to have the same period of licence. You can quite easily imagine a scenario where a short licence is appropriate, a licence from a particular date is appropriate. There is no model licence.
No, I understand that.
There are certain mandatory licence conditions, but there's no model licence to have there.
I'm still not certain with respect that that answers my lord's question. Because you effectively, even if you grant a licence from some future date, what does that do? Does that mean that they're then operating the premises unlicensed during the period before that? Or are they deemed to have been operating it lawfully because of the effect of the appeal process?
No.
During a period when they weren't fit?
No, so what happens is when you make an application for a licence, you're deemed to grant it from the date of that application because otherwise the delay in processing would be held against you. But once it's granted, authorities, if it was granted, authorities frequently backdated because that's how they cover the position. Nothing requires them to do that.
So on your argument, one could end up with a position in which for a period, perhaps a lengthy period of months, somebody has been operating business when they were not a fit and proper person.
You can get that under both scenarios, so you can get that even under my learned friend's analysis. Because on his analysis, what you would do is you'd refuse the licence, make a fresh application relying on the new material. And in that period between the refusal and the fresh application, you'd have exactly the same problem. They've been operating a property without having had a licence. The point I
They would be deemed to have a licence because they've made a fresh application.
From the date of the application, that's how it works. So application one fails.
Yes.
Application two made some time later, deemed licence from that date.
Yes.
And then granted and backdated to solve the difficulty.
Yes.
That's exactly the same as the FTT making a decision that whatever the position previously, now you are entitled to a licence and we direct you to grant it on these terms. There's no difference between them. The point I was trying to get at before disappearing into the weeds of hypothetical scenarios there is I do so swiftly, when you look at the scheme of paragraph 34, you start with 34.2B and the fact there's no limit on the reasons why you were unaware. You look at 34.3 and the fact that all three of those are final decisions. They're not quash and remit. And then you look at 34.4 for two reasons. One, that strengthens my argument that it's a final decision because it's directing not just the fit and proper, but also the terms to be granted. But secondly, this is an answer to my learned friend's point in the Begum case he took you to about it's not for the court to trespass on the role of the decision maker unless Parliament has so indicated. Well, 34.4 is the indication. The tribunal is put in a position where it can direct the local authority that they must issue a licence in these terms. And again, this becomes quite important when we think about other kinds of, we think about the full range of the licensing dispute. This is a fit and proper person test. If you don't pass a fit and proper person, we don't get to the second question in licensing, which is the terms. You could have a situation where the local authority says, not fit and proper. FTT overturns, and then 34.4 says it can also go on to determine the terms of that licence.
I don't see how that really bears on ground one. I can see that it bears on ground two, but how does it bear on ground one?
It bears on ground one because what it shows you is, in my submission, that paragraph 34 is trying to reach a decision that reflects the actual on-the-ground position now. It's trying to get, the tribunal is trying to issue a decision where everybody knows where they stand at the end of it. License, yea or nay, terms resolved. That's why they take into account material up to the date of their decision because otherwise you do have the chewing and throwing process. Otherwise, you do have the going back to the local authority for a fresh application. And that's not what 34 is driving at. Paragraph 34 envisages, the act as a whole envisages a process. Application, determination, appeal, licence granted and on what terms.
Yeah.
Not application, determination, tribunal decision, and possible remission for reconsideration by the authority.
And is the logic of your argument that if the upper tribunal were to find an error of law and were to remake the decision, it, the upper tribunal, considers matters which have occurred since the FTT? And so on up to this court?
Well, I was wondering about that when you put that to my learned friend. I'd have to accept that's possible on mine because it's section 11, I think, the Tribunal Courts and Enforcements Act. The power to, if you find the error of law, the upper tribunal must either remake or remit.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to remake, it could remit. It will all depend on why they found the error of law.
Well, if it were remitted to the FTT, the same point would apply. The FTT on your argument would consider the position as at the date of remission.
If there's something relevant to take into account, yes, absolutely. And we say there's nothing objectionable to this because this is about reaching final decision.
Yes.
We do pray in aid that the difference between the appeal under this provision and what we suggest is probably the best-known housing appeal of all, the Housing Act section 204 appeal. And I might just briefly take you to section 204 provision that I rather suspect everyone has burnt into their minds, given how often it makes its way to this court.
Yes.
Two important differences to note, of course, 204.1, appeal on a point of law, and 204.3, confirm, quash, or vary. That's why we get the, often in many sad cases, the seemingly endless to and fro of decisions in homelessness cases, because of quashing. That's how Parliament indicates there are certain decisions that the court sends back to the primary decision maker. It's the quashing power.
Well, isn't that because originally there was no right of appeal?
Agreed.
You had to apply for judicial review. And in creating the right of appeal to the county court, Parliament, in effect, replicated judicial review. And as the House of Lords confirmed in the reiner Begum, that is exactly how the county court is meant to operate.
Entirely agree, but the point is one of statutory wording. The draftsman, if he wants to create a scheme that involves remission, uses quashing wording.
Well, that's true. And here we're dealing with an appeal, not judicial review.
Quite.
Does that tell you much?
Well, it makes the point that the logical inference or logical outcome that the appellant contends for is that paragraph 34 of the 2004 Act is deceptively close to how section 204 works because it involves a crystallised decision at a point in time and it involves the continued role for the local authority once the tribunal finds an error of law. And we simply say firstly, on the wording, that's not right and hence I wanted to take you through three and four and what I say they mean. Secondly, if that is what Parliament wanted to do, it could have copied the best-known housing appeal statute that achieves that purpose. And thirdly, it's because it then introduces the next point I wanted to make, which is how did this work before the 2004 Act?
Well, before you come to that, is there anything you want to say on the word but and may?
Yes, there is, and if I just open my notebook if you'd like. The critical word there is the may rather than the but. And what may is doing is indicating that as a matter of controlling its own procedure, the tribunal doesn't just give you carte blanche to bring in anything that you wish to bring in. Because it's expressed as may and therefore it's a power, obviously there has to be relevance. But secondly, there could be cases where there was something of which the authority was unaware, but it would be wrong to now take it into account. And one example of that could be if you were a landlord who deliberately put in a just about good enough application just to tease out what the criticism might be, what the challenge might be. You use your application, not as a genuine application to get a licence, because you think you'll be refused. Use it as a scoping exercise, try and get initial view of the authority. And then you hit them with all of your good material on the appeal. That's something where you could see the tribunal saying, no, I'm sorry. This is almost a Henderson and Henderson style abuse of this. You're using the tribunal's process because you know there's something wrong with your application and you've been sounding them out. And now you want to hit them with all this material they haven't had a chance to consider. That's what may is doing in there. It's not, it's covering the fact that the tribunal will have to make evidential case management decisions about what's fair in any given case. That's all it's doing, respectfully.
So may, you say, means that the tribunal will consider matters of which the local authority were unaware for whatever reason, if it is fair to do so?
Well, may means that there's a power. A power is a discretion to be exercised judicially. There's one scenario where you could quite easily see a tribunal acting properly judicially, saying, I'm not letting it in.
Even if it's relevant?
Conceivably, yes. If you've decided, if the tribu, again, I'm choosing quite an extreme example, but if
Well, you are, and you're choosing an extreme example where it is relevant, which is why I asked you the question.
Well, quite, but it's perfectly open to a tribunal to say your whole appeal is an abuse of the process and we're not prepared to take part, we're not prepared to engage in that.
Well, if it was an abuse of process, then tribunal would strike it out.
Well, I don't want to get into the mechanics of the tribunal's procedural rules, but strike out is surprisingly difficult.
You're postulating a situation in which, for example, is it a tribunal's made a whole series of orders requiring somebody to put some evidence in and they've just failed to comply. And then at the very last minute, when the hearing is set, they suddenly rock up with a load of relevant material but which they held back and wanted to use as an ambush. And you'd say the tribunal would have the power to say, well, we know it's relevant. But you can't ambush
Yes, that's a rather more plausible example.
You can't ambush the local authority with this. And so we're not going to allow it in. So we have the power to exclude it on a process ground. It's an abuse for that particular material to be adused.
Yes, that would be plausible, yes.
The difficulty I have with this, Mr Bates, and I hope you can help me with it, is this, that if that's the right approach, I don't see what that provision is doing in the statute at all. Because if the decision is effectively a decision, an up-to-date decision, then the tribunal would have the power to take into account anything it considered to be relevant, irrespective of whether Parliament said it may, irrespective of whether the council had seen it, because it is making a decision for itself as to whether or not somebody's a fit and proper person. So I'm wrestling with the idea of what this provision is doing there, if it means what you say.
I mean, what my lady's really putting to is what I was about to put to you, I think, in a different way, which is, can you focus on the word but? Because I think the point is that what is said against you is that if B means what you say it means, you actually wouldn't need it if rehearing means what you say it means.
Sorry.
Mr Bates, you can give us an answer in an hour's time. Circle.